Next up, we have public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings. How are we going to do this? Do you want me to call this now or during the public hearing?
Well, what is it? Is if you have two requests to continue public hearings and if you convene the public hearings, then you have other issues that you have to address with regard to moratorium and so forth if you start. So you probably want to hear them now if there are comments about any public hearing items.
Okay. We're going to do that. So we have Michelle Magalassi here to speak. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm Michelle Magalassi. I live at 1320 Falls Drive. I'm here to address the process of development applications. Prior to December 1, 2020, I did not have an understanding of development applications and how items stemming from them eventually land on the council's agenda. Since then, I've learned about the process and I'm very disappointed because the process appears to be dysfunctional. Case in point, at the December 1 Planning Commission meeting, two items were on the agenda that stemmed from one development application. The applicant's request was both to rezone his property from residential to agricultural as well as to apply for a special use permit to allow for a marijuana grow house. Note that the applicant's property needed to be rezoned in order for him to have a grow house, so these two items were originally entwined within the development application. However, the two items were split on the Planning Commission's agenda as separate and distinct. After numerous protests on both items during the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to approve the rezoning issue as a recommendation to the city council, yet tabled the SUP as requested by one of the Planning Commissioners. Knowing that the rezoning request would be on the city council's agenda at a future date, the area homeowner spent countless hours researching city code, the city's comprehensive plan, and strategic plan in order to prepare and submit a comprehensive formal protest of the rezoning issue. At the January 5 Planning Commission meeting last week, the SUP was tabled for a second time to February 2. However, this time it was per request of the applicant because his original application was found to be incomplete. There was no opportunity for a public hearing on the matter after numerous homeowners were prepared to speak that evening. So how does the public know when a hearing will actually occur? The published notice has not been amended and it will now be two months since the actual published date. Now the rezoning issue is before city council as a standalone item. However, the applicant has submitted a request to postpone a public hearing and per the memo the applicant wants, quote, "additional time to gather more input from the area homeowners as requested by the Planning Commission," unquote. So is this the request by the applicant really to table the rezoning issue? It appears to me that the SUP tabling action was to push it to the Planning Commission's February 2 meeting. The Planning Commission has already moved forward with recommending the rezoning request to council and therefore these two issues should move forward separately with zoning taking the lead. In my humble opinion, this process has disrupted the lives of area homeowners, causing confusion and anxiety, and I ask that the city revisit and clarify the development application process for its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. We appreciate you being here. Okay, that does take us to Item 6A, Public Hearings. And this is 6A is a received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezon property addressed as 908 East 12th Avenue. This item also has a request to postpone to a later date. To January 25, correct?
Yes.
Councillors, is there a discussion or a motion to postpone this item to the January 25 meeting?
Motion to postpone Item 6A to the January 25 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone Item 6A until January 25, 2021. Melissa, please call the roll. I can't see you down there and I can't remember who's down. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti.
Yes.
And Councillor Jaloski.
Yes.
With a vote of four to zero, that item will be postponed until January 25, 2021. Item 6B is received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment for property addresses 4814 North Washington Street. This is the item that was just addressed in public comment. Councillors, questions or comments or a motion to postpone this item is being requested for March 1, 2021.
Do you have a question?
Please.
How will this affect the notice timeline?
The notice of public hearing?
Uh huh.
That's a good question. Mr. Gorman?
Don't let I heard all of your questions, Vice Mayor.
How will postponing this to March affect the notice timeline?
If you vote to postpone it, it won't affect the notice, but my recommendation would be to republish the notice prior to that date, given that we're six weeks out.
Okay. And if we choose not to postpone it, what does that option give us?
I'm sorry.
If we choose to not postpone and go ahead and make a, I mean...
You have that option not to postpone it if you choose to go forward tonight.
Okay.
So if it is, the notice will be republished so that everyone will have adequate notice that the hearing will take, would take place on March 1.
That's my recommendation that if you do choose to postpone it, that you republish the notice.
What are the implications of going ahead on this tonight?
It's a discretionary call on your part. I don't know that all of the participants are present tonight.
No, in fact, the matter is, we made a concerted effort to contact people once we received the request to tell people that their attendance was not necessary.
It's not a completely out of the ordinary for us to postpone these hearings based on the circumstances surrounding them. And in this one, I gather, there's still some discussion, at least attempted to try to figure out a compromise of some kind. I will say that we've received, I know I have, I assume the rest of you have received quite a bit of communication on this item, almost entirely from residents of the neighborhood who are opposed to the rezoning. And, you know, when we do these public hearings, we certainly take all of that into consideration and make decisions based on that feedback and everything else that comes before us. So I think it would be best if everyone's here to be able to do that. So certainly, my opinion would be to go ahead and postpone this so that we can deal with it. I assume that's also, since it's a March 1 date, we would have it, we would have a recommendation also from the Planning Commission prior to that as to the SUP?
That's my, that's my understanding.
But they won't be able to, the reason the SUP has gotten pushed back is because this, if this person wants to do a marijuana grow facility, it has to be zoned correctly before that can be granted, correct?
That's correct.
So would the Planning Commission even be able to rule on that at all before we make a decision as to the zoning? Or can they do it provisionally?
Well, I mean, you're basically breaking it into two pieces. They could end up with zoning and then not a special use permit if you choose not to grant that permit after the zoning is changed.
Yeah, I just, I can't, I don't, I don't think that the Planning Commission would be able to rule on the SUP.
If they haven't rezoned.
If they haven't received their rezoning yet, right? So I can't imagine that, I mean, the Planning Commission action would have to come after whatever action we take on March 1 as to the SUP.
Well, there have been instances where you, where the Planning Commission took up both the underlying zoning, rezoning, and the, and the recommendation with regard to the special use permit at the same time. You can do them in tandem. If obviously if the zoning fails, then the use permit would be moot and...
Yeah.
Well, I guess the question I have is, there's two things going on in my mind. One is, the process obviously is confusing and frustrating to a lot of people. And then the other part is, what does the council feel about this actual zoning issue? So in other words, there's, there's two things really that were, so I don't know if that's a discussion that we care to have tonight?
Well, I think it's difficult to have the discussion on the zoning issue because we have, one, the developer himself, I don't think is here, correct? And two, told the other residents that we're not, that it was likely that it would be postponed and therefore not everybody from, from their, who would have input on that side of things is here tonight either. And so it's, I think unfortunately, while I understand the frustration with the timelines, I think it's best for us to have everybody here and available to have the discussion. You know, I don't think it would be helpful for us to try to have a discussion on the merits of the rezoning without the full discussion taking place.
Mayor, it also seems, based on our speaker tonight, that there's maybe an opportunity with this time to help educate neighbors and community about what exactly this process does look like when it's functioning properly and kind of what those steps are and where their opportunities are for input and how best to provide that input and things like that. I, I'm sorry that they've spent so much time doing their, their own research. I think to me, that seems like an opportunity for us to provide some clarity and some education for the community on these types of issues. So I don't know what we can do in the interim if we delay and decide to republish. I think the republish is very important so that the community members do know and have opportunity to know that it'll be coming up in front of us again. But what are our opportunities to help educate on the process in the meantime?
Well, I think it also is up to us to figure out when we are deciding on a zoning issue, if that zoning change makes sense in the area that they want to change it. And so I don't know if there's already thoughts on that or if we, if it's best to postpone. I want to do the right thing for the community and the, and the neighborhood that it affects, but I also want to be mindful of timing and frustration of people and it's, and no offense, but it's not our fault if the developer said, "Don't come." That's not our, that's not our, although actually, I think I heard that we said, "Don't come."
Oh.
No, that's true. We did call, because of the history of the council honoring those requests to postpone, we did call neighbors and tell them it was not necessary to show up because it was, we were confident that it would be tabled.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not at all, it's just not at all unusual, unfortunately for those of us who, well, we're, I'm more used to this because I've been doing this for a while now and seeing how this stuff works, but it's, it's not unusual, especially in a contested issue like this, for the developer to try to get some more time to talk to folks and try to find an amenable solution. And generally, that's something we appreciate. We would like for, for folks to, to try to get those things worked out. I mean, I think historically, this council has been pretty consistent in not changing zoning in residential areas when the neighbors don't, don't, aren't, you know, generally on board with it. And, and so, you know, if developers have those requests, then we would certainly ask them to get as much input as they can get because, you know, these are residential neighborhoods and, and, you know, people bought their homes with certain expectations and you don't want to just go willy nilly and change things. But if there is a chance for some sort of compromise or situation that works out for more than, for everybody, then we'd certainly want people to have the time to do that and for us to, to be able to make the best decision we can based on, on those discussions. So I get that it is frustrating. I understand, ma'am, your comments tonight and if the communication that we've done on our end has not been adequate, we certainly should do the education to figure out what we could do to fix that. But we also want to make sure that these issues are heard fairly and that everyone does have the opportunity to, to have their input and for us to figure out compromises if they're available. So, you know, it's unfortunate, I guess, to delay, but we want to make sure people are, are on, on the same page here.
I think there, I, I do want to say that I really appreciate and respect the amount of work that the neighbors put into researching and gathering signatures. And because the petition does seem to represent 50% or more of the citizens in the, in the notice area, it will require a four to five vote by the council.
Four out of five, yeah.
Four out of five.
Yes.
Rather than three, so...
Yeah, it has definitely been the most, I think, organized and researched response from a neighborhood association or a group of neighbors on a zoning issue. And that, that does matter to us, especially on zoning. It matters on, on all issues, but these are, a zoning issue is one of, you know, these are properties that they expected to know how they would be used and changing that is a, is a big deal. And so we certainly appreciate the input that we've received so far and, and expect to hear from many folks when we do hear this matter, if we don't hear it tonight. Along those lines, is there a motion as to the postponement?
May I add the notification?
Yes.
In this motion? Motion to accept the postponement with the caveat that there will be a notification to all appropriate people in a timely manner.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this public hearing till March 1, 2021 with the expectation that new notice will be published on, for that hearing date. Any further discussion? Melissa, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti.
Yes.
And Councillor Jaloski.
Yes.
With a vote of four to zero, Item 6B will be postponed for public hearing on March 1, 2021. Item 6C is received public comment regarding the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant Corona Response Program, CC-21-10. Are, you're not John McClain?
Not today, I'm not. No, sir. Not this evening.
You guys keep messing with me tonight. I can't see very well out there and then...
And then we slip somebody new in on you.
Yes.
Paula Dennison, Assistant City Manager. Mr. McClain is unable to attend this evening, so I will be giving the presentation on this opportunity that we have before us. As the council is aware, back in December, we initiated, you initiated a program for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and utility assistance for the citizens in Stillwater. And you appropriated funds for that and authorized the assistance through our daily bread to evaluate and administer that program on behalf of the city. That was an excellent run for this opportunity that the city has to apply for a community development block grant coronavirus relief program. And we're here before you this evening to ask for, it's actually $490,000 that we will be applying for, for the rent and utility assistance. The application is due February 1, so we wanted to get it on this night's agenda in a timely manner to make application. There are a couple of things. This is a public hearing opportunity for anyone to come and speak. I do want to cover things that need to be addressed by anyone in the, in the public. So the, there are three components to this grant opportunity. The community development, housing, and public service needs, which we are looking at, the rental assistance and the utility assistance. The program purpose, there are specific requirements that the program criteria has and we are already drafting the agenda, if you will, for how we will implement the program and meeting, guaranteeing that we meet the purpose of the CDBG coronavirus program. Also, we are looking again to contract with a third party to assist us in the distribution of these funds. There, just for information purposes, I would like to provide an update on what we have seen so far from the, our daily bread, the program that the council implemented back in December. As you know, it goes through January 25. As of this morning, actually, we have received 299 applications. Of those, there have been 55 applications that were denied for some of the reasons where they did not meet the program requirements that had been established. 115 applications have been approved for a total of just over $118,000. $150,000 is what had been appropriated. 87 payments have been sent directly to vendors for a total of $84,854 and change. There have been 35 City of Stillwater utility customers that have been, have been assisted at a total amount of $9,845 and change. So it's obvious that the program works and there's the need out there. Therefore, for tonight, we are asking that the resolution CC-2021-1, that is later on your agenda, be approved and we will start, we've already started the application, but we will make sure and get it in well before that February 1 deadline. And this is a public hearing, but right now I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councillors, any questions for Paula?
Paula, was this the grant that we, when we were talking about our previous assistance program that had, does it have lower cutoff or higher, it's, the need is more in order to meet the cutoff for the assistance? Is that correct?
Yes, it's a, it's a very specific, it's not just low to moderate income, but it's also specifically calls out meeting the Section 8 criteria and that does have some of a different standard at the Housing and Urban Development or the HUD level.
I'm sorry, if you could say that again, it didn't come over to this side of the stage.
So this, this is the grant that we had spoken of previously. Typically HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, has a low to moderate income limit and the Section 8 limit that this grant specifically identifies is more than the low to moderate income. It's the extremely low income that are specifically called out in this grant. So it will be helping not only those that, low to moderate, but the extremely low income personnel.
So both then, not just the extremely low?
Right.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, there's a greater opportunity for help with this. One of the things that is specifically called out in the grant purpose and the criteria is that the rent assistance and the utility assistance can be up to six months and we are, we're still searching for clarification on whether or not, say for rent or utility, that includes any disconnect fees or reconnect fees as part of that assistance. So there's still some information that we're working at gathering, but with this amount of funds, we're going to be able to have a greater brush of the assistance that we provide to the citizens.
I think that the thing that seems so different to me is the income cutoff as opposed to the grants that we gave, which did not.
Yes, and that is specifically a requirement of this coronavirus grant.
I'm sure it is.
Paula, how, how much money did you say was available on this grant?
So we are making application $490,000, some administrative cost out of that is going to be set aside from those grant funds from the 490, but it's going to be approximately $460,000 that will be available to be expended for assistance.
And is there, there's no match, required match?
None. And this is not a competitive grant. A lot of our CDBG or other grants are competitive. This is not. We have gotten confirmation from Department of Commerce. When we specifically asked them, if we meet the qualifications, do we get the money? Yes, we do.
But we could also either add additional funds ourselves to this or continue a program that serves other folks who may not qualify for the, the income requirements here, correct?
That is correct. Outside of this grant, the assistance that the city has provided through what we're operating under currently does have a broader reach because it is not income based.
And it's also includes mortgages, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So we certainly would want to make use of this $460,000 if we can get it, but we may also want to look at whether there's other opportunities for us to, to continue other funding.
Does this replace any of the other CDBG programs or is this in addition to other CDBG programs for this year?
So our typical CDBG programs that we operate are more the bricks and mortar. They're not programming, nor are they direct assistance or have those direct beneficiaries from the financial standpoint. They have more the direct beneficiaries from the sidewalk or the new sewer line or the new water line. So this will not be in conflict with, nor will it replace any of those typical CDBG opportunities that we have.
Awesome. So we should expect those opportunities still. This is just an additional, I imagine, is this CARES Act or additional CARES Act funding that's coming down through Congress?
That's our understanding, that this is leftover CARES money that they are allocating under the auspices of CDGB.
Yeah, and I do think that even there's been some additional funds in the last stimulus package for rent assistance and things like that, so things to maybe be looking for as well.
And we did sidebar here, we did just get notice last week of our allocation for this funding cycle for the standard CDBG grant application.
Was it good news?
Yes. With a 50/50 match.
Further questions on this before we open the public hearing? This time I will open the public hearing on this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if there's anyone present who'd like to give their input on this issue. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I guess, Paula, the recommendation is just the resolution?
Yes, sir. It certainly is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Item 7. Before we get there, I actually had a, a public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings request that was delivered up here a little late, so I'm going to go ahead and ask if Natalie Watkins is here and wants to give... Oh, you're speaking there as part of that? Excellent, okay. Good deal. Well, we'll just go there. That makes it easy. Item 7A, under general orders, is a presentation of proposal from the Storah Community Center Foundation to provide accessible parking on the south side of the community center. Jim Beckstrom is here to present for us. And also Natalie Watkins.
Hi, I'm Jim Beckstrom, Chairman of the Stillwater Community Center Foundation. And also joining me here is Vice Chairman of the Foundation Garrett Cooperus. And we, our recommendation is to make a safety and accessibility improvement to the south entrance to the lobby. This facility is, I've got some pretty serious accessibility challenges for people with mobility issues. The closest, for example, the closest true handicap parking to the main entrance to this complex is actually 50 yards and it's 50 yard uphill climb to get from the handicap. And that's the easiest access. So, so it's, so there's lots of room for improvement and that's why we're here. We, we had a study done by a group of architecture and mechanical engineering students done in, in 2019 that, that group presented to the council at that time, in spring of 2019. That was a conceptual analysis. It was, it was really just to prove viability. You know, they got the tape measure out, they did some surveying and basically said, yeah, there is enough real estate in this part of the south parking lot and in this juncture of the buildings at the cafeteria, which is now the dining and event hall and the main complex, for us to get a meaningful ramp system and stair system in here that interconnects the two buildings and gets people into the complex efficiently. The, right now, it's, because folks that don't have mobility issues don't fully appreciate this, but if we have an activity going on in the complex right now that includes the dining and event hall and the main complex, people in wheelchairs actually have to go all the way around... all the way around the block to get from the cafeteria back into the main building. And so, you know, if you're walking up and down the stairs, you don't really appreciate that, but if you've got mobility challenges, you do. And so this project aims to eliminate that. It also provides a safe drop-off. That's another lacking element of this complex, is that there is really no safe drop-off location. The area in front of the complex, the main entrance, actually isn't a safe drop-off area. So there is no place for passengers to get out and into this complex efficiently and safely, as safe as we'd like. There's room for improvement, that's why we're here. This is a very, very busy place. Over a hundred thousand threshold crossings a year. The Red Cross, for example, there's always something going on in here. This is a wonderfully used facility, and it has so much more potential if we can just improve accessibility. I mean, the Red Cross is just down the hall here. And so, I mean, that stuff's going on constantly in here. This area has actually been a center for Stillwater since the land run. If you've actually studied the history of this block, the very first school for Stillwater was built on this block, and we've had numerous schools, and this has been a gathering place for city leadership, basically as long as Stillwater's been a community. And we want to make, we want to make sure that keeps happening. We've got a great facility here, and there's fantastic room for improvement. The mantra for the foundation is accessibility, affordability, and sustainability. And so that's, that's what we're working towards. The next page on the presentation, and I should have just gone through the presentation here, I think you all have that. But this, this page here illustrates the groups that use this complex, and this is constantly expanding. So it's, it's a great, great use. And with the drop-off in the south parking lot, we'll be able to accept school buses, buses from senior centers, I mean, there's, it's a game changer actually for us to get that south, that south entrance improved. And the next picture just shows, I think everybody's familiar with what that south entrance looks like. Right now, we've talked about it, the accessibility is all the way around the block. If you look at, if, for example, you came here to watch your son or daughter perform in the Lowry Activity Center, and the only parking spots available, which is actually common, are in the main parking lot, you literally have to go all the way around the block. Half of that distance is outside, the other half is inside, to see that performance. And so, so this access actually is transformational for how this facility is accessed for people that need help. So help us make a difference here. I wanted to, Garrett is a Vice Chairman of the, of the foundation. He's helped us put together our plan and, and helped in the discussion and the concept. And I'd like for Garrett to just talk a little bit about his experience here with, with the complex.
Two examples of experiences, I had, one was Blues Festival last spring, and we had lots of food trucks downstairs, and we could not access them, because I was in a wheelchair at the time, and it was totally inaccessible to us. Another one was voting. Voting had a huge turnout of folks here, and that really helpful people here got me through the voting experience, but it was quite an ordeal to get back to our parking spot. We had both times that I parked in the big parking lot, and my wife, my love of the wife was to be in the wheelchair the whole way, but it was really difficult. Those two experiences, they were pure doubt positive, but they were quite an ordeal.
Project is to modify the parking lot, reverse traffic flow, to enable...
Jim, can you pull the mic back up, please?
There you go, sorry. I'm talking to you, not the microphone. Okay. So the project is to put a ramp and stair system to the south end of the lobby here, off of the main parking lot, to reverse traffic flow to allow safe drop-off from vehicle, from cars and buses, to widen that drop-off area. It actually connects the two buildings. Not only does it get the parking lot access to the main complex, but it actually gets the dining and event hall and the main complex connected efficiently again, so folks can move back and forth. And it helps operations, too. It's going to help the people move equipment to, back and forth between the two. The, the design that was put together in spring was conceptual. They basically verified viability, but it's not a detailed engineering or detailed architectural plan, so that, we're not seeing that yet. That's the next step, and that's in our budget. We have a cost estimate put together. It's, it's had some refinement since the students did it. It's, this is actually about twenty or thirty percent higher than the estimate that they had created. The, the cost elements of this are the main ramp and stair system, the canopy, which actually is not mandatory. We want to include that. Our vision is to get all this funded all at once and get all this built and installed as quickly as possible. It includes electrical work. Because the canopy sets up high enough that it interferes with the electric lines, the lines have to be elevated, so the electrical work there covers that. Total cost is three hundred and two thousand dollars. At this point, we have secured a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for this project. Fifty thousand dollars from the Community Center Foundation, fifty thousand dollars was matched by one of the local foundations. That foundation also extended another offer of seventy-five thousand dollar match, of which eleven thousand dollars has already been matched in two weeks. So we are, we're making them run towards getting this thing fully funded. So our vision is to have this thing done this year is, is what we'd like to do. Sooner is, is better. So that's, that's kind of gives you an overview of what the cost basis is, where that, where the numbers, we'd like to move forward with engineering and architecture as soon as possible. So the request, the request is, we would like permission to move forward with this project as soon as possible. Start engineering just as soon as we can exercise an agreement with the city that meets their requirements for approvals, for how design's going to be approved, project management issues, you know, who's going to do what, how procurement's going to be handled, et cetera. We, but we also ask the city, we request the city fund the in-kind electrical work. SEU put that forty thousand dollar estimate together a while back. They'll probably want to revisit that, but that's, that's the number that they, they put together, and we'd like the city to come in at that level if possible. But I'm also going to say, we don't want that to hold the project up. So we want to get this thing going. But that's, that's our ask, so we would like approval from the council to go forward with this.
Thank you very much, Jim, we appreciate the, the presentation. Counselors, any questions for Jim at this point?
I would just ask Jim, or say, how great it is that you've gotten the grants that you have. Have you gone beyond the community for grants?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
This is kind of the next big step for us. We've got, we've got feelers out already. We've had some donors that have indicated interest over time to, to help make the facility better. And, and we've been kind of holding, we've been wanting to kind of get this thing shaped up, and it looks like we finally got it moving. So yeah, I think there's an opportunity to go outside as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, the, the work the foundation has done, that you have done, that the students have participated so far, I mean, this is all a wonderful benefit to our community and, and certainly a much-needed improvement to the community center. We, we appreciate everything that you all have put in so far. And I can't speak for the council, but certainly would, would expect that the city will, will want to try to help participate to the extent we can. I don't know what this formal action from the council might be on something like this tonight.
I think that the foundation wanted to be sure that they were headed down the right path, because they're about to spend considerable amount of money on engineering and architecture. And I think they also wanted to know if the city would stand behind what they had been earlier told, that we would move the electrical for about four forty thousand dollars. And I've talked to Lauren Smith about that, and they have that in the RSF. I don't think that they're looking so much for formal action as they are some assurance that those things will occur. And once that final, the discussion was, once that final drawing is available, whether it's just the ramp or whether it's a ramp and a canopy, that they'd come back and share that.
Sure.
You know, this may be the time, Natalie, I think, came down here, and I think it'd be great to hear from her if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
There she comes. Let me move you back.
While Natalie's coming forward, the three poles that are, that need to be moved, will they be actually moved?
Gotcha.
Or buried? Or, I have to ask, you know?
Well, and in fact, the matter is, we anticipated that you would ask. And the difference, the difference is about eighty thousand to bury it, we think. And the problem, the reason that we say we think is because we're not certain, they didn't have GPS back in the day when this building was built, and we're not certain what's underground in the area that that would have to go. It could be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, it could be anywhere from a hundred and twenty thousand to a couple of hundred thousand, depending on which you're going into.
Good evening, Counselors, Lauren Smith. Yes, sir, Mr. Nickel, you're correct. It, it certainly could be done. It's a lot more complex of a project and time-consuming. And of course, there is the dollar amount, some of the unknowns. We're at least a hundred and twenty thousand, if not a little more. It's not that we can't do it, it just adds a lot more complexity, and most importantly, cost.
And that's to bury these lines instead of just move the poles to a different area?
Yes, sir. The forty thousand is just to move some poles back, and it, it would still clean it up a lot doing that, but yes, that's just moving some poles.
Move them back in the same area, though?
Yeah, back in the same area, it just raises it. The, the other issue is that if we bury it, we're going to have to have some internal work done to this building because of where the electricity enters the building. And that would be something we'd have to contract out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Ms. Watkins?
Yes, my name is Natalie Watkins. I've a, I'm a thirty-year resident of Stillwater, and in the last twenty years, I've used a power chair. People said I was hell on wheels before, and then I got wheels. So I've been a longtime community volunteer. After I retired from OSU, I did not retire as a community volunteer. And in fact, I was on deadline to two different nonprofit boards that I currently, where I currently serve, and I realized it was the eleventh, so I decided I better come in person, even though I've pretty much been sheltering in place since March. I was on the original Accessibility Advisory Board that the city convened at least fifteen years ago to look at various city buildings. So I feel kind of invested in the community center, because it was one of the places we spent a great deal amount of time. I remember oh so well that we thought we were in great shape, and then I was checking out the handicap stall in the bathroom and realized that's where they were storing the extra chairs for one of the meeting rooms. And after my wheel grabbed on the corner of a huge stack of chairs, and I couldn't imagine what I was doing in there, it was not going to the bathroom, believe me. But my whole point is, this is such a valuable facility for our community. Because I serve on so many nonprofit boards, I've been here for United Way, I've been here for community health fairs, I've been here for Special Olympics coaches training, I've been for receptions, for awards ceremonies, and on and on and on. And because I serve on a number of regional boards, boards as well, I've been in other communities that aren't fortunate enough to have a facility that's affordable for nonprofits to use, and also is so adaptable to different kinds of uses. So I really believe that making this facility that already exists in our community accessible to everyone, and I've been that one that circled the block this way, and then come back around to go in the door, you know, to be able to get to the cafeteria, then come back around to go into a, the next session that was in a room that was down the hall. And I just believe that this makes so much sense. Interestingly enough, the student group that was working on designs for this accessibility also contacted me and asked if I would meet with them. And, you know, I'm impressed anew at the creative and sometimes wild ideas that students have, you know, isn't it great? You know, they, they are not bound by reality in many ways, but, you know, after talking and my demonstrating the results of what some of their ideas would do, much to their shock, it's kind of like going to a supposedly accessible hotel room and then going to visit the manager, because you have to transfer onto the side of the bathtub to get off the toilet, et cetera. I mean, it's just crazy what people with second-hand good intentions sometimes voice on people with disabilities. But you have a, a facility that is accessible, so to the degree that the parking and the drop-off could be, I know tonight when I was pulling in, running a little bit late, somebody was parked in the handicap stall, parking slot in the front of the building to let somebody off, but I could tell that they weren't staying, so I just kind of paused until I could get into the parking place. But both of those are things that would be such an asset to a facility that's already an asset to the community. So finally, I guess I would just say, how often do you have a partner that comes forward and says, we want to raise money, we want to help improve this community facility? So that's yet another reason, the fact that you can be a good partner with another community group to perhaps increase the value of this facility. I encourage you to consider the proposal made by Jim tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
We're lucky to have her. Okay. Are there any other questions?
That was so eloquently said, I'm so appreciative of that feedback, and it's something near and dear to my heart, that, the idea of inclusivity and making sure that all of our community has access to, whether it's these kinds of civic spaces, like our community center or playgrounds or, or buildings, I think, what an awesome opportunity to, to prove that, so.
Not only that, but just from the conceptual drawings, it will improve the attractiveness of the, of the building in that area a hundredfold. Too bad the poles are still going to be there.
I was thinking the same thing. I want the canopy just for the aesthetics, much less the, the weather protection.
Yeah, it does set a tone, doesn't it?
Jim, I only have one question, I apologize if I missed it, but what is the timeline? How long was this project estimated to take once we're underway?
That's a great question. The best answer would be after engineering's done. Okay? But this is not a huge project. I mean, it's, as soon as I say that, it's going to turn into a year, but, but I, I think this project is measured in months, okay? Maybe even weeks. Properly planned, I think this thing executes quickly. And so I'm a project manager by background, and so I'm going to be kind of relentless on making sure that this thing is kind of planned down to the minute as how it's going to get executed, so that it doesn't interfere. I mean, one of our concerns is interrupt, interfering with operations here. So to me, the faster this thing gets done, the better for everybody, you know, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, I'll take the somewhat odd step of moving from the chair to say, I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve moving forward with the more detailed planning of the project, and also to affirm the city's commitment to provide at least forty thousand dollars in, in-kind contribution in this, in the form of moving power lines and that sort of thing. So I think, well, I'll make that motion, that we, we approve moving forward and also affirm, affirming that city's commitment on those funding, subject to more specific plans and, and dollar figures and all that sort of thing. But I, again, very much appreciate the work that you all have put into this. It's clearly something that's needed for our community, and we need to do what we can to make sure it gets done. So that's my motion. Do you get that?
I think we all can second it, maybe. Everyone seconded it.
So we have a motion and a second on this item. Melissa, can you please call a roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
And Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that motion's approved, and we look forward to seeing more plans and a beautiful structure out there sometime in the very, very near future.
There you go, I love it. There you go, I love it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you all for being here. Okay. Item 7B, approve entering into an agreement with Confluence for the Sixth Avenue corridor study for an amount not to exceed $100,000. This is CC-2112. Ryan Harkins is here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ryan Harkins, Community Amendment. So this proposed corridor study and budget amendment are companion items to the engineering design for the Sixth Street corridor, which, as a side note, we would say that is about 15% through design right now. We're waiting on ODOT stamp of approval for...
Did you say 15% or 50%?
15.
15%? I was going to say 50 would be way, way part of that.
We wish, yes. 15, 1-5. The idea that would, is that once ODOT approves that next step, that we could be out doing community meetings related to the engineering design. This companion study would look at urban design, land use, as well as transportation issues related to parallel and cross streets, so we'd be trying to take a more of a comprehensive approach to this corridor. This process initiated with an RFP that was issued in September of 2020. We accepted 15 proposals. A five-member review panel, including members of the Transportation Advisory Committee that you appointed, were part of the review team. The other, the members were city staff. We shortlisted five teams that we interviewed at the beginning of November. We did all the interviews for finalists in one afternoon. It was a very long afternoon. We sat a lot and looked at a lot of computer screens. Out of that, we scored all of the purple interview proposals again, and selected Confluence as the top candidate. At that point, we initiated a contract negotiation, which we bring forward to you tonight. To give you an idea of the corridor that we're looking at, so everyone is on the same page, we begin with Perkins on the west, excuse me, on the east, going north toward University, and then west toward Western Avenue, and then south to Ninth. So you essentially have a corridor that is two miles long roughly, and three blocks wide on each side of Sixth Street. This gives us an opportunity to address transportation issues related to our bike routes, our cross-street connections along Sixth, as well as the parallel streets. With that said, this is the timeline that staff is envisioning with the consultant, starting later this month and early February, wrapping up through initial and final design, and having this to you by the end of the year. The deliverables that we noted in the staff report are stakeholder interviews, a draft study that incorporates that input from the public, and a final plan based on the input that we continue to gather through the course of the project. The consultant will be using some of their public input software that they prefer, but we'll be doing that in concert with the city's public input methods as well, so things that we already have that we utilize on a daily basis as the city will be spreading information out and sharing with the public as well, and using that to gather input. Questions of staff?
Councilors?
Mr. Harkins, I did look up the company that is proposed to do the work, and it was very impressive. Is ODOT committed to accepting what we designed?
Well, with the consultant, every consultant that we interviewed was told was, you're going to make what you do fit with ODOT, not the other way around. So this is a, really, a planning type of study where we take what ODOT is doing for the design for Sixth Street and trying to complement that, not change it.
I don't think the Vice Mayor's going to like that answer.
No. Luckily, you're very far away from me.
I mean, I think I have the same question, just in the sense of, they'll be working with ODOT at some level. I know ODOT does what ODOT wants, but is the point of this study to actually look at what Sixth Street should do, or is the point of this study, I guess what I'm hearing is that the point of this study is really to look more around the area to figure out how can we connect? We're not really asking these folks to tell ODOT, this is how we want Sixth Street designed.
That's correct. This is designed to look at the areas adjacent to Sixth Street, and how best to utilize that, based on what the engineering design will be.
So none of the community feedback that's received will be directed specifically at Sixth Street?
For this project, no, but Sixth Street will have its own public input process, so we will be taking the input from both and putting them together to help.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harkins, could you speak just a little bit louder?
Sure. ODOT's engineering design will have its own public involvement process, so will this, but we will, staff will work to make sure the input from one merges with the other so that both parties know what's being said.
Is the timing staggered, then? Are we anticipating ODOT's direction for Sixth Street prior to the start of this contract work?
You can speak a little bit more to that. In terms of the consultant for this project, their input will be ongoing throughout the course of 2021. ODOT's project, as far as the engineering design, will have milestones that will be, where public input from one will be taken to the other, but we imagine ODOT's design process taking a little bit longer than this. Do you want to speak to specifics?
Sure.
So let's back up, Monty Carnes, Director of City Engineering. Let's back up a little bit. I think it's been about two years now since ODOT came and said, Monty, we're ready to move forward with Sixth Street, and this is what we're thinking. And I said, you know, guys, this is a 60-year impact, and it's been about 60 years since Sixth was reconstructed. I said, we need to take a holistic view of what this does to our community. So the intent of this study is not to say what the typical section of Sixth Street should look like. The intent is, what is a community do we want Sixth Street corridor to look like, or what vision do we have for it to evolve into over the next three, four, or five decades, and then make sure we don't do anything that precludes us from being able to reach a vision of what we think it ought to look like. ODOT's very much on board with this. They want to make sure that the connections across work for what we're talking about. They're, it's not an adversarial, and I don't want us to get into a point where we think this is an adversarial of, we're going to tell ODOT, and ODOT's going to tell us what to do. I'm interested in looking at a holistic. We've got lots of people that need to use that corridor, and the corridor is defined three blocks either side. What can we do creative to make sure we get all forms of transportation taken care of, and in a safe manner, and do something neat for the community for the next decade, and frankly, long after I'm gone? So I want us to be able to focus long-term on this, and come up with something creative. I think we can, and ODOT's committed to doing that with us and partnering with us. As Ryan said, ODOT's moving forward with theirs. They will have a public hearing before long that has several options of what the typical section could look like through that. My understanding is it's going to include bike tracks and exactly what that required to do, you know? Maybe what we decide to do, I think this could be a challenge. Frankly, I think there's better solutions than trying to cram everything into that corridor, and that's, you know, that's probably going to have Confluence help us look at.
Thank you, Monty. That's, I think, a really, a good point, and what we have experienced so far in these discussions, which is, the community recognizes, as well as ODOT recognizes, that this is a, I mean, a huge, huge project for Stillwater, not just because the construction itself will be a huge project for Stillwater, but the way Sixth Street functions in this community is, I mean, you know, everybody, just about everybody drives on Sixth Street at some point during their day, and so it does, we need that holistic approach, and, you know, bringing in a consultant at this point to help us figure out not just what the lanes are going to look like on Sixth Street, but how is this whole area going to look, and what can we do to, you know, make the, make everything work together as we go forward is a, is a, is a great approach, and is what we've hoped would happen as we've been discussing this over the last few months. So we certainly do appreciate that and the work that you guys have been doing to deal with all of the competing interests, I'm sure, that are going to be even more apparent as we go forward with this project. So I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, do you have?
No. I will say, Vice Mayor, a long, long time ago, when I worked professionally in Kansas City, I had the opportunity to work with Confluence. They are very forward-thinking, a great group of people.
I was very impressed with their website.
Yeah, I think they'll do, they'll do a good job for us, for sure. I see familiar name on the back of that. I guess for me, I'm just wondering, like, how we, with such an extraordinary effort on ODOT's part, to include public involvement and things as well for Sixth Street, how do we best integrate this effort and that effort to make sure that, you know, things aren't being decided on either one of those paths that are preventative of the other path? I guess I'm a little concerned on how we, you know, because you could get, you know, if we're involving citizens, which is what we want, we want, you know, people to provide feedback and input, but if you're kind of providing input over here, and there's another group of folks, or maybe, you know, some mingled, but kind of on a separate track, providing input, you know, you could end up with a lot of people on one track being disappointed because their ideas are kind of diverging from the ideas that are being generated over here.
I think my concerns along those lines, too, would just be that we do this process, it's done sort of before ODOT's final designs are done, and then, you know, something in the engineering, or something in, you know, whatever it is, they go, well, actually, we can't really do it that way, and then this process kind of, part of it that we were expecting, you know, we'd move forward with this process through, and then go, oh, well, actually, we can't do that because of X, Y, or Z, which, in a project like this, I think we should expect to see those kinds of things come up later in the process. So is there, I guess the question would be, do we have a continuing, will we have a continuing relationship to, you know, maybe revisit, revise some of this as we go forward from whatever Confluence is able to do at this point, because it will be another couple of years after that before shovels are actually in the ground on this project? And how does, how does that relationship work going forward?
Sure, and one of the ways that we're doing that upfront is using many members from the Transportation and Advisory Committee as members of the Steering Committee for the project Confluence will be involved with.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harkins, I cannot hear anything that you're saying.
Okay, we'll try it this way. One of the ways that we're going to help ensure that continuity is to use members of the Transportation Advisory Committee on the Steering Committee for the project Confluence will be doing. City staff that are on one project will be involved on both, so you will see the ability of staff as well as citizens involved in the project to help walk the information between the two and coordinate that. We also know that we may get to a point in a year or two after we have a final plan where we make changes. That's the nature of planning. Plans evolve, as they should. When they don't, you have problems, and so we understand that we may need to do things down the road, even in the implementation side, based on changes due to engineering design.
Is the study area for, Monty, I think you had mentioned the corridor, was it three blocks on either side of Sixth Street? Is that the corridor for the Confluence study or work, or, and is that the corridor for ODOT as well?
Yeah, we take, okay, cool. So the three blocks wide by two miles long corridor is the study area for Confluence. The project area for ODOT will be focused more on the right-of-way of Sixth Street itself. So again, this goes back to the Confluence project will be focused on the holistic approach and comprehensive approach to the area surrounding the right-of-way itself.
Is ODOT required to do an environmental document for Sixth Street reconstruction? Yes. Which would presumably have a wider than just the right-of-way, or is it different if you're within existing construction?
I'm not completely certain about all those parameters, but I do know, you know, based on Perkins Road, they look, you know, a lot of things that they think could impact wherever land uses, what could have been there, historical, archaeological, environmental, all those types of things. Certainly, the historical things that might be along Sixth Avenue will be addressed. The flood plan along Duck Street certainly is part of that as well. So those are all being looked at. We've had conversations with both ODOT's project manager and the project manager for the consultant, and, you know, they've talked about meetings and them being present while we do working sessions with Advisory Committee, as well as some of these other meetings. So I think we're going to have good cooperation with ODOT and their engineers as we go forward.
Do you know what the timing would be for the environmental part of ODOT's study?
Well, I know they are working on that. Those generally run parallel with design, and I'm sure they've done their preliminary, I haven't seen any preliminary reports on it, but, you know, based on other projects, you know, they'll try to have that done, you know, somewhere before 40 or 50, 60% somewhere.
Yeah, I know, just from, yeah, usually by 60%, they've got that done. I just was, I was curious only because, and I guess maybe the rest of you maybe that aren't as familiar with that process, I say environmental, but that covers not just environmental issues, it covers the historic issues that Monty was talking about, so if we had historic resources, or, you know, very old resources, if we had social impacts, so that includes relocations and noise, those kinds of impacts. I was just curious because that could be a good baseline or jumping off point potentially for Confluence as well, that data that would come out of a study like that could be helpful in terms of, you know, where there might be friction points in the community along this larger corridor.
Yeah, and I'm sure this will be included in that, since the issues have been raised. And I'd also ask you to hang on to those thoughts, because we're going to talk more about them on my last presentation.
Counselors, any further questions on this contract? I did, on the, on the budget amendment, it shows moving this from the Duck Street project, moving the money?
So you will recall that, going back several years, we, we've talked about a wide range of projects the community might want to do, and one of those was to look at rebuilding Duck Street. And you task the transportation group with doing some preliminary work on that, and we had put in a long-term budget, submitted to hire a consultant. We did that initial look, and our conceptual budgets were in the $10 million range, if I remember correctly, and then COVID hit. We just did not see any way that we can do that in the foreseeable future. We came to you in the summer and told you in our fiscal year, 20 pavement management projects, we wanted to instead mill and overlay Duck Street, and that is in the approved plan to do that. So that's our interim plan for doing that, and so now we have that many left for using in other situations, and we just thought it was a good fit for this project.
So Ryan, can you give us your recommendation on this?
Staff would recommend approval of the contract. Staff would recommend approval of the contract and the budget amendment.
Thank you, sir. Counselors?
Motion to enter into an agreement with Confluence for the Sixth Avenue corridor study for an amount not to exceed $100,000. Approve the budget revision reallocating funds and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into this agreement and approve the related budget amendment. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
And Counselor Jeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That takes us to item 7C, approved budget amendments related allocating CARES Act funding for the 2020 Salary and Security and Compliance Coordinator at Stillwater Regional Airport. Mr. Prigle.
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. Uh, every year we, uh, at the airport, reevaluate our organizational structure and, and needs. And this time last year, when we were preparing our budget, we, uh, determined that we really needed a compliance, a security and compliance coordinator, uh, for our growing, uh, needs at the airport. And we put that together. Um, and when it came before, uh, city management review, of course, we were staring at COVID and the uncertainties of it. So that position was denied at that time. Uh, fast forward to May of 2020, the airport received a little over $1.1 million in CARES Act funds. And, uh, with that, we were able to earmark a full year of personnel expenses as well as three-year salary for this security and, uh, compliance coordinator. So with that in hand, we, uh, reapproached city management and, uh, was, were authorized to hire and fill that position, which was done in June. Uh, when this position was brought on, our budget for FY '21 was already in place. And so, um, normally, uh, we have vacancies throughout our personnel budget just through different attrition measures. I'm happy to report, uh, we've not had anyone leave the airport in a year, uh, now. And so that's a good problem to have, but it is leaving us short on target for the end of the FY in our personnel. So this budget amendment is to move money that is already in hand with the CARES fund over into our appropriate personnel, uh, account so that we can make, uh, our projected into the FY of '21.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors? No questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendment allowing allocating CARES Act funds for the FY 2020 Salary of the Security and Compliance Coordinator position at the Stillwater Regional Airport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
And Counselor Jeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Item 7D is approved budget amendment transferring $185,000 from fiscal year '21 capital fund to master park and community resources plan fund and authorize the release of a request for proposals for a master plan for parks and community resources, CC-21-3. Barbara Bliss.
Good evening. Barbara Bliss, Community Resources Manager. And I am here to request approval of the budget amendment transferring $185,000 from capital money to fund a master park and community resources plan. Most cities in Oklahoma have a master plan to guide officials in planning, budgeting, and implementing parks and recreation services. Stillwater has never had the opportunity to utilize this tool. We believe the benefits of a master plan would far outweigh any upfront costs of hiring a firm to look at everything from the over 2,000 acres of land we currently maintain to the facilities we manage as well as the programs offered. A huge part of this process involves community involvement. A master plan would gauge the interest of the citizens and their desires. Do we need a soccer complex? Would people like additional dog parks? Is the almost 50-year-old municipal pool still meeting the needs of the community? And have the public-private partnerships been successful? These are all a small sampling of items that would be researched and answered. The plan would also look at funding options. Currently, the majority of the community resources capital budget is used to replace failing equipment and make repairs to aging structures. The hugely successful Splashpads, Dog Park, and Playability Strickland Playground were all the results of outside partnerships, which has been a huge benefit to Stillwater. But if we want to become proactive rather than reactive, a plan that can be reasonably implemented is needed to move us forward. A portion of the plan would evaluate the structure of the Community Resources Department to make sure we are meeting the needs of the public. It would also study our ability to maintain the current amount of land the city has been entrusted with and provide suggestions. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Barbara. Counselors?
Well, I, I did hear you say move from reactive to proactive, and I did not have to hear anything else.
I'm glad I put that in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Barbara, we, you know, our city, we have, you know, the C3 master plan to look at kind of Confluence of everything around the city. Have we ever had a master plan for parks before?
No. And, um, I've worked here 36 years. Two former Parks and Rec directors still work for the city, Jim Scott and John McClain. We have never had the opportunity to do a plan, and those two have always wanted to. But typically, when the cost came up, we were in the position we needed to fix things rather than move forward. So at this time, we've got this capital money sitting here. We would love to be able to implement this plan at this time.
I think this is so important. I am so excited to have this come in front of us. I think, um, it's a great opportunity, even right now in our current circumstances with COVID. I think, you know, sometimes it's challenging to find the funds to spend on capital projects, and it's challenging to pull the trigger on spending those funds. And I, in my work experience, have seen a lot of communities decide to do some planning in those moments. And I think this is a great moment for us to spend some time doing some planning on our community and civic spaces. I think it helps, you know, as things do break, it helps us find a way to prioritize those things. It helps us, I think, maximize the partnerships that we've had the opportunity, um, in these last few years for some of our community spaces. It really helps set a vision, not only with the community, but maybe with those partners that have some dollars. And I think of all the things where there are grant opportunities, community spaces, public spaces, open spaces, outdoor spaces, trails, parks, playgrounds, there's so much funding out there and available that if we can kind of direct our vision and kind of figure that out, there's, there's, I think, lots of opportunities to find funding, um, to move that forward. And of all the things in our community that you hear, you know, people talk about or grumble about, I think some of these, these community spaces are some of the most forward-facing spaces in our community. So, you know, whether it's we need more soccer fields or, um, you know, we need an accessible playground, um, I think these are things that would be very impactful for our community to, to spend some time focusing on. And I think, talking about the community center today, hopefully this would be a, a space that could be included in that study, um, indoor and outdoor spaces, I think, is, is a part of that. It just, it makes me really hopeful, you know, someday soon, we're going to gather again in bigger, bigger, bigger amounts of people. And it's exciting to think about having a plan for how we can do that, um, in a, in a way that's really impactful for our community. Um, one thing that our, um, one of our speakers, um, talked about, I, I wasn't aware that we had ever done an accessibility or adapted, like, a, a study, or we ever had a group that was doing accessible.
Long time ago.
Yes.
Yeah, I would really, really hope and encourage that that's updated and incorporated into this planning process. I think that's so very important.
Well, actually, an accessibility study was in my capital for this coming year. So I get to take that out if you approve this plan.
Wonderful. I think that's, it's so very important, I think, as a part of that. Um, and like I said, I just, I think, I hope that we can, you know, include spaces like the community center or other activity centers that we might have as a part of that. It's not just, you know, the youth of our community, it's the elderly in our community, it's, you know, our age group as well. So I think there's, there's tons of opportunity, um, to find ways to innovate. And I'm, I'm so grateful that you guys brought this up.
Counselor Jeloski asked me about it literally days before the agenda came out, and it was on the agenda. So you anticipated the request.
I did.
Fantastic.
Actually, the first year I was on city council, we did a, um, tried to gather all the master plans that we could find. And it wasn't actually a master plan for parks, but it was a re, a compilation of the parks. It's on mimeograph paper. I mean, it's that old.
Yes, they're housed at the armory. So if you want to come see them, you're welcome to.
Okay. Are there further questions? Do we need to have a motion on this one?
Yes. A motion to release FY '21 capital items, replacement of equipment at Berry Park, Arrowhead Park, and Badcock Park, and the municipal pool slide in the amount of $185,000. Approve the budget revision reallocating the $185,000 from FY '21 capital to master park and community resources plan and authorize staff to prepare and release an appropriate request for proposals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
And Counselor Jeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you all. Item 7E, bid recommendation for the fiscal year '20 pavement management program full depth repair. Mr. Carnes.
Good evening again, Counselors and Mayor. Monty Carnes, Director of City Engineering. Uh, this item is part of our pavement management process. As you will recall, we have very many techniques that we use. One of them, uh, we use to handle deferred maintenance items is a kind of an indefinite delivery contract called full-depth repair. In this contract, we, uh, do not guarantee any amount of work. We do it on a work order basis. We identify what needs to be fixed and then bid unit prices, um, on, uh, so we then use the various items of work and determine the cost that the contractor does. Uh, we had three, uh, bidders, LOP, North Central, Jalino. Um, Jalino was the low bid. All three of these are local companies. Um, we've had a little bit of experience with them, and they did, uh, very, very nice work in a short order of time, and we were pleased with that work. So we're looking forward to working with them if you so award the contract to them. Um, any questions before I give you a recommendation?
Counselors, what's your recommendation, Monty?
So again, we are not putting a dollar amount on this contract. The way you've appropriated the money, we can move it around. So if we got to the end of the year and had some money left over, we could go do additional work. But we estimated $350,000. Uh, we asked you to award the full-depth pavement replacement bid to Jalino CCC. Also, also that you authorize the use of the contract for other council projects, whether they're transportation or other departments, and authorize the city manager to sign contract documents. Uh, authorizing them for use by other departments, uh, would allow Paul at the airport, if he needed something done in his parking lots, then we already have somebody on board, especially if it's an emergency. Um, public works could use it, um, electrical, they would all have to come with their own funding. But it would allow them to use the contract and, uh, respond in a, in a faster manner to some need they might have.
All right. Counselors, is there a motion on the item?
Motion to award the full-depth pavement replacement bid to Jalino CCC, authorize use of the contract for other council-approved projects, and authorize the city manager to sign contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
And Counselor Jeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that bid recommendation is approved. Item 7F is approved amendments to the professional services contract with Olson and Associates. Mr. Carnes?
So this is an ODOT project that the city of Stillwater is participating in to reconstruct Perkins Road, um, add a fifth lane from, uh, basically Hall of Fame to Lakeview, um, transition out of the fifth lane north of Lakeview, also melon overlay the existing asphalt from six to Hall of Fame, and then from, um, the north end of the project north of Lakeview to Airport Road. Um, that's, it's been a long-term project. Uh, you first entered into an agreement in December of 2013, some seven years ago. Uh, the project was delayed because of funding for a period of time by ODOT. Um, Olson has incurred additional expenses from the original concept due to, uh, several things. One, just inflation for salaries. Uh, second is, um, additional scope, uh, requested by both ODOT and the city of Stillwater in particular, making sure that we did have 10-foot wide sidewalks. And, um, lastly, ODOT came back and said they needed some additional geotechnical, which is, um, checking the, the soil and the dirt, uh, below ground, uh, along the retaining walls. So, um, those were covered under two different task orders with Olson. Uh, task order 13 was for the actual design work, and they're asking, uh, additional, almost $55,000 for that work. And then task order 16 was the geotechnical, and the requested ODOT additional work was $5,000. Those totaled $60,000. We would need a budget amendment to, um, allocate $60,000 from the HELOC sales tax, and that was the original source, uh, for the funds on this project. Happy to answer any questions.
I assume we get to ask the state legislator to reimburse us for the increases due to the lack of budget funding for ODOT?
We can ask.
I'll call Representative Ranson tomorrow.
I will tell you, um, I added this up the other day. We're going to spend about two and a half million, and ODOT's going to spend about 13 million. So keep that in mind when you ask.
Decent investment. Counselors, any real questions?
How does that, how is the split with ODOT on a project like this?
So on, it varies by project. On this particular project, we're responsible for all of the engineering costs, all of the right-of-way acquisition costs, and all of the utility relocation reimbursement costs. ODOT's going to pay 100% of the construction.
And that's negotiated per project?
Yes.
Ish?
And, and a lot of it depends on what their funding source is.
Did we get your recommendation? We did.
I'm happy to give it to you again. We'd ask a motion to approve amendments to task orders number 13 and 16 to the contract with Olson Associates for the additional services, and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $60,000.
Counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
And Counselor Jeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is, or, yeah, the budget amendment? Is that who we are? That's approved with a vote of five to zero. Sorry, I blanked out there for just a second. Thank you, Monty. Where are we? G? I blanked out for more than just a second.
One more.
Hold on. I thought we were going to H. G, approve amendment to the professional services agreement with Olson Associates. That's why I blanked out, because they're both for Olson Associates.
That's correct. So this project is the extension That's correct. So this project is the extension of Western, also called the Airport Arterial. That was considered, when it was conceived, as a three-phase project. First phase went from Hall of Fame to McElroy, second phase from McElroy to Lakeview, the third phase goes from Lakeview to Airport Road, and then, and then on over to Washington. Phase three is split into two, phase 3A and 3B. The environmental clearance, which Counselor Zeloski referred to earlier, is required for the entire phase. So we're, we're looking at that. ODOT has funded most of that work, but there's a portion in there of which we're responsible, and, and that has to do with the relocation of the ball fields. Those ball fields were, received some of what's called 6F money from the federal government. One of those ball fields will have to be removed in phase B, not in the first phase, but in the next phase, but we have to have that clearance for the whole thing now. So the ball field has to be relocated. In addition, future development at the airport will likely take the other two ball fields that are there in that corner. So we would have to go through this again in the future, so we think it just makes sense. Let's just do it all now. We've located a location for where we think those would work, and that's south, to relocate the ball fields would be south of Lakeview and to the west of Western, on some property we own in that area that's outside the runway protection zone. And that's where we're proposing to do that. We have to get approval from the Oklahoma Tourism Department to buy off on that. There's a lot of steps to go through, and part of that is we've got to do an environmental clearance on that, on that property as well. And that was not in ODOT's scope to do. So we've attempted to do some of that work in-house. Came clear that there's some things that we really can't do, and some others that's challenging to use staff time. So we asked Olson to give us a proposal to, to complete that work, and they have done so. Cost is $35,657. I will tell you, ODOT is spending $60,000 on their environmental clearance as well, and it's, it's not quite as involved as what, as what this piece will be. So we think that's a reasonable, reasonable cost.
And that comes out of the reserve for the project?
That comes out of the project reserve. That's correct.
So this will cover the 6F documentation for the relocation of those two ball fields?
That's correct. And, and we're, we're hoping that we can, that it also takes care of the 4F. There's some question as to whether or not Sandborne, it's been referred to as a park in the past, but we've never really declared what's a park and isn't a park. It's all, all that land was purchased for the airport and for the use of the airport, and clearly says so on the documents, but through the years it was excess property, so, you know, we've used it. We brought you, oh, several months ago, maybe a year or so ago, a corridor map that designated what would be right-of-way, what would be airport, what would be a park, and we believe that will take care of that, but that's one of the eyes we have to dot also.
More questions or a motion?
So we would recommend to you that you authorize staff to execute amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Olson in the amount of $35,657.60, and authorize expenditures up to $40,000 for the services, and that include a contingency.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on this item. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that amendment is approved. That takes us to item 7H, approve budget amendment allocating grant funds received from Grand River Dam Authority to fund the community power codes for the community program. Mr. McNichol.
I'm pleased to report that we have received a check in the amount of $10,000 from our wholesale electric provider, Grand River Dam Authority, who is also partner with many public power communities here in Oklahoma. They provided these funds with the full knowledge that we would be purchasing coats for those that need them in the cold weather, and we are in the process of doing that. We had a little health issue in our office, and that's probably a week and a half out before we make delivery of those coats, but we think we'll be able to provide somewhere in the vicinity of, well, over 200 coats, and then a lot of gloves and hats and that kind of thing to help out some of those in our community that don't have those things. So it is our request you approve a budget amendment allocating grant funds received from Grand River Dam Authority to fund the community power codes for the community program.
Thank you, Norman. Counselors?
Motion to approve the budget amendment allocating funds received from the Grand River Dam Authority for the community power codes for kids program in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved, and we'll offer our sincere thanks to the Grand River Dam Authority for their generosity in that program, and to the city manager's office for putting together the, the program and, and getting those coats and hats and gloves and everything out to our local agencies so that they can get them distributed. That's a, a good thing. Thank you all for doing it. Item 7I is overview of updated City of Stillwater Investment Policy. Kristi Kluck.
Good evening, Kristi Kluck, Finance Director. And on the agenda this evening is a resolution updating the city's investment policy, and so as you said, I'm just here to provide an overview of that updated policy. Per city code, the, the council must establish a investment policy via resolution. So that policy must be in conformance with state law and also city charter, and the finance director is, does have the responsibility of investing city funds in accordance with that policy. The last investment policy was adopted in April of 1992, and so I think we can probably all agree that it's definitely time to revise that. The revised policy was developed through collaboration with the Finance Department, the City Manager's Office, the City Attorney's Office, and the city's financial advisor, the Baker Group. And in the council report included in your packet, there is a bullet list of, of the major changes in the new policy, and I'm not going to recite all of those changes, but I thought I would just highlight a few of those. So the new policy provides a clearer statement of scope, objective, conflicts of interest, and use of a competitive process when investing funds. We've added the ability to leverage professional investment consultants to provide investment services to the city. We've increased the limit on placement of invested funds in a single financial institution from 33% to 50%, and then we've also provided for quarterly reporting to the council. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselors?
Kristi is, so obviously 1992 is a really long time ago. Is there, are you talking about a more, like a more, a smaller, shorter cycle in term? I know a lot of the work we've done this last year has been looking at some of those policies and how often we kind of revisit some of those things. Will this be another
Yes.
policy that we kind of move to update more often or review more often?
At least on an annual basis, we'll look at it. If it needs more frequent revision, we would definitely bring that to you.
Kristi, can you explain maybe some of the background between, behind the change, like from, increasing from 33 to 50% the amount in, when one financial institution?
Yes. So the city is very limited in the types of investment vehicles that we can take advantage of. And at times, it has become a little difficult, just trying to spread the funds amongst different financial institutions because of those limitations. And we did kind of look at other cities' investment policies and did find that many others have this limited 50%, and so that's just to give us a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, so we can't just go buy all the same sort of investments that I might or somebody else might. We've got a, we've got a limited, that we, limited number we can pick from, so.
Right, right.
That makes sense. In terms of professional investment consultants, that wasn't part of the policy before? Like, we couldn't?
Not specifically. I mean, it didn't exclude us from using them, but the new policy just provides for, just more provisions up front for utilizing those services.
Okay. Counselors, any other questions?
No.
We'll take that up under resolutions. Thank you, Kristi. Item 7J, overview of proposed parking district at Stillwater Regional Airport. Welcome back, Mr. Prigle.
Thank you. Paul Prigle, Airport Director, still. And tonight, come with some information and a little bit of background for your consideration as there's a resolution ahead for the Stillwater Regional Airport Parking District. It is kind of hard right now, seeing empty parking lots, to imagine having parking problems. However, this has been a work in progress pre-pandemic, and then, of course, when the pandemic hit, it kind of got backburnered. But I appreciate Mr. Gorman's office and the city manager's office in helping work this up. So obviously, at our airport, we are continuing to try to be responsive as possible and meet all the needs of the various users. And we continue to adjust everything from parking to things that people ask for to help accommodate, whether it be inside baggage return or, or whatever the case may be. And so as we were heading into the pre-pandemic, we had a, you know, the year before was a rapid growth, and we were really starting to see some issues with our parking. We, Mr. McNichol and Ms. Reams use several one, one words to describe the airport. One of them is unique, and we know that that's a very unique environment, and we really don't have a lot of ordinances that cover some of the parking issues that we have out there. For example, if you come up to the airport and you pull up to the front of our terminal, there's a sign that says, if your vehicle's unattended, we're going to tow you immediately. We can do that, but there's not a, just a specific ordinance that allows for that. And so sometimes we find ourselves taking square pegs into round holes to make things work. And so this parking district will allow us to essentially surround the airport property under an overlay that would allow us to work with city management legal to develop needs related to our restrictions. And those restrictions can be anywhere from security setbacks, employee parking, where our long-term and short-term parking may be. And then it just also allows us to kind of establish a framework for into the future for whatever those needs might be.
Okay. Counselors, any questions?
And our recommendation would be to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think one of the, one of the questions that I've had repeatedly today, and I just want to make clear, is that this means you're doing away with free parking? It does not. What, what, amongst the things that precipitated this, the need for this is people who, for instance, might go home for two months and leave their car parked there while they're in Kuwait or Dubai, or wherever in the world they might be. And that will allow Paul to establish some long-term parking to handle those requests.
Yeah, it's a unique parking issue around an airport, so I, it makes sense that we would have something in place that lets the, the airport management actually figure out how to set all that stuff up, so. But yes, no, no changes to parking costs at this point. All right. Further discussion of airport parking? If not, we'll move on to resolutions. 8A is Resolution CC-20, excuse me, CC-2021-1, the first one of 2021. A resolution regarding the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Response Program. This is the resolution that allows us to apply for that grant. Questions, comments, or motions, counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2021-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC-2021-1 is adopted. Item B is Resolution CC-2021-2, a resolution adopting investment policy for the city of Stillwater in its trusts per prior discussion. Questions, comments, or motions?
Resolution to adopt, resolution, I mean, motion, motion, Resolution Number CC-2021-2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC-2021-2 is adopted. Item 8C is Resolution CC-2021-3, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council establishing a parking district within the city located at Stillwater's Regional Airport to be known as the Stillwater Regional Airport Parking District. Counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2021-3.
Second.
We have a motion and seconds on resolution, on, to adopt the resolution. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC-2021-3 is adopted. Onto item nine, ordinance is on first read. We have ordinance 3468, an ordinance closing a portion of utility easement on property addresses 5020 North Washington Street. This was discussed at a meeting last year. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3468 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, excuse me, to advance ordinance 3468 to second read. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Zeloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3468 is advanced to second reading. Also on first reading, we have ordinance 3469, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Division 2, Improper Parking, to amend Section 29-136, prohibited in certain places, and Section 29-138, parking more than 24 hours prohibited on city parking lots. Mr. Norman?
This is the companion to the resolution that you just filed, and basically, the, the primary change here is that it authorizes the enforcement of parking regulations at the airport for the signage that is going to be used to create the various zones and the parking restrictions and so forth. One of the things that we did not have prior to the adoption of the parking district tonight, or anything else, was the ability to go out and enforce our parking regulations in a consistent manner there. So that's the primary function here. I did take the liberty to clean up a couple of things while I was at it. I took out some redundant language with regard to parking of vehicles on private property so that it's consistent throughout the entire ordinance. And so, but other than that, this, this ordinance, the main thrust is to, is to bring that parking district into full purpose and effect.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, questions, comments, or a motion on the ordinance? Councillors, questions, comments, or a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance Ordinance Number 3469 to second read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, Ordinance 3469 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have Ordinance 3467, an ordinance rezoning property addresses 815, 817, and 823 North Jefferson Street and 924 West McElroy Road, from RT two-family residential districts to RTM two-family and multifamily residential district. Councillors, questions, comments, or a motion as to this ordinance?
Motion to adopt Ordinance Number 3467.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
And Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, Ordinance 3467 is now adopted. I'm going to skip down and do appointments just because I want to. Because it's odd to me that it's after this, but anyway. On appointments, we have three expiring members of the Stillwater Medical Center Board, Joe Haney, Beth Buchanan, and Dr. Carrie Couch. Mr. Haney and Ms. Buchanan have both applied to be reappointed. And the nominating committee of the Stillwater Medical Center Authority, which included Councillor Zanotti and Board Member Lobarto, have recommended the appointment of Gary Clark, who applied for the open seat. And so at this time, I will move to appoint Joe Haney and Beth Buchanan to a new term and to appoint Gary Clark as a new member of the Stillwater Medical Center Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on these appointments to the Medical Center Board. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, those appointments are made, and we certainly appreciate the service of those members and the willingness of Gary Clark to serve. Would also like to highlight the service of Dr. Couch as a member of the Medical Center Board for several years. Appreciate his service and congratulate him on his retirement from that service. Okay, we'll jump back up to 10. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B4 involving confidential communication between the City Council and the City Attorney concerning ongoing litigation styled Amon v. City of Stillwater, case number CJ2019474, Payne County District Courts. It is my opinion that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the City Council to process this claim or to conduct an investigation, litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McNichol?
Thank you. Excuse me, our waste management, water utilities, and public work crews were recently recognized by a resident named Patrick for picking up ice storm, ice storm limbs and debris. I know there are a number of people that you've probably heard from as the council that are unhappy with how long this is taking. But I want you to know that as of Friday, crews have collected about 65% of the city's storm debris, which adds up to 3,560,000 pounds. We were expressing that in tons, 1,780 tons, that's easy to say, doesn't seem like a lot, but 3,560,000 pounds. So we want to congratulate our employees on the recognition and thank them for representing the city's standards of excellence.
That's, yeah, that's a huge project, and we appreciate the folks who have been working on it for so long. Just to, an aside, I had a question come up about whether, why we weren't still doing self-drop off, which we had early on. The same crews who were policing and dealing with the self-drop off are now out collecting pickups. So, one, we don't have the manpower for that self pickup to continue while we're out collecting curbside. And secondly, we don't have...
Place to take it.
A place to take it. There's really no place else that we have that would allow free drop off of branches and limbs and that sort of thing. The city dump, I guess, would accept them, or not the city dump, the dump out north of town will charge for folks who want to take those out there, but unfortunately, we don't have another free option.
That's correct.
So we'll get to the ones on the curb as soon as we can, and again, appreciate the work doing here. It's good to hear that we're over halfway there.
It is, and I think Chris is out there. I think when this is over, he's not going to care to see another tree limb for quite a little while. There's just a lot of it out there. And the mountain of it where they're taking it is pretty unbelievable.
3 million pounds is a lot. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Stillwater City Council election for seat four is approaching, so now is the time to make sure you're ready to vote. The deadline to register for this election is this Friday, January 15. Requests for an absentee ballot will need to be made by February 2, and voting day is on February 9. Just to be clear, the deadline to register to vote in the election, to register as a voter, is this Friday, January 15. We already have a slate of candidates. You can find more election information at the Payne County Election Board. And I would just like to say that local elected office is so important to all of us, and I'm so excited. We have seven people who have filed for this seat and looking forward to the various forums that will be held virtually, Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters, probably Rotary also. So please inform yourself of these candidates and be sure to vote.
Amen. Councillor Zanotti?
Yes. Danny Wick Excavating recently completed installation of the Hunter's Ridge Water Line. This project provides a second connection between the city's municipal and District 1 rural water systems, improving resiliency and water quality for both systems. The project was completed on schedule and within budget. Thank you to the residents of Hunter's Ridge and Richmond Road for their cooperation and patience during the project.
Absolutely, thank you. Councillor Wedlake?
Yes, City Hall will be closed for observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 18. However, many city services remain available online. Information is available at the city's website, stillwater.org. Trash and recycling are collected as usual on all holidays, but not yard waste. Make sure to set your carts out by 6:00 a.m. because collection routes can vary. And as a reminder, the Convenience Collection Center is closed for city-observed holidays.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Jaloski?
It's the beginning of a new year, in case we forgot here, which means it's time to consider signing a rural fire service contract. Stillwater residents who live outside of city limits can sign a $100 contract to ensure emergency response fees will not exceed $2,000. All contract fees collected are used to purchase tools for rescue and other fire equipment. You can find applications at stillwater.org or call the fire department.
Thank you very much. I will note that we're looking for, if you're looking for a way to get more involved in the community and you didn't sign up to run for the City Council seat, you could also join the Board of Adjustment. We have a vacancy for an unexpired seat on the Board of Adjustment, which is empowered by City Code to conduct hearings and render decisions on matters of appeals, variances, and special exceptions to the zoning ordinances. Term length is three years, and you can find a complete application at stillwater.org/citizenboards. I'd also want to note that coming up next Monday, is that next Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, Martin Luther King Day is next Monday. This year is already moving quickly. Stillwater Community United is hosting our annual Martin Luther King Day celebration. A few of us, a few of you are wearing the face masks that have been printed up for that. This year, because of COVID, we won't have a large gathering, but they've planned a march, sort of a relay march around town, actually starting, is it?
Southern Woods Park?
Yeah, in Southern Woods Park. And then there's a list, and you can find this on the, a link on the city website, through 15 different stops, all the way up towards the university, where there will be kind of an outdoor speech there at the university. But the idea is to give as many people as possible the chance to walk along and march as part of the celebration of Dr. King and to do so in a distant, outdoor, safe manner, given the current status of our pandemic. So certainly appreciate all the work of Stillwater Community United in putting this together in a very trying year, and would encourage everybody to get out and take part in the Martin Luther King Day celebration next week.
Mayor, I think that gathering begins at 12:30?
Yes.
12:30 in the afternoon. It's going to be a beautiful day, 54 degrees. It's a two-mile walk. You don't have to be on the whole two miles. You could join or drop off at any point, but certainly look forward to a good showing.
Absolutely, yeah. Hopefully lots of people come on. Yeah, you can just kind of jump in. There's spots everywhere, but if you find people walking along in the parade, feel free to join in and take part, so.
I think the map will be in the news press shortly.
Yeah, you can find that, I'm sure, lots of places. We'll make sure we get it out there. Okay. Where am I? At this point, I will recess the Stillwater City Council meeting and call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for January 11, 2021. On the consent docket, we have special meeting minutes from December 14. Trustees, is there a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, the consent docket is approved. Next item is General Orders 5A, approve City Hall Transfer Switch Project and Budget Amendment Appropriating Expenditures. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. In October, the electric system sustained significant damage due to an ice storm that affected approximately 9,800 customers.
What?
City Hall, yeah. Back to the trees, right? City Hall was one of those customers affected and was without power for approximately 2.3 hours. The outage caused City Hall to close. City Hall has been affected by power outages or power surges several times over the last year. The outages and surges have caused disruptions to City Hall as well as caused damage to equipment. To help mitigate these disruptions, staff is proposing to minimize line exposure to City Hall as well as install an automated transfer switch that will provide redundant service from another substation. City Hall's electric service is provided from a circuit breaker in Central Substation, which is approximately a half mile away. However, the line that feeds City Hall continues for another additional five miles, which is where most of the faults occur that are affecting City Hall. Staff is proposing to minimize this line exposure by building a spare breaker out at Central Substation and then building, let's see, Central Substation that will take the most direct route to City Hall, reducing the line exposure from five miles to about a half a mile. That line will then be connected to an automated transfer switch that will transfer service to a circuit breaker out of Central Substation should the primary source from Central Substation fail. The automated transfer switch minimizes power surges and restores power to City Hall within a second should there be an issue. The project cost is estimated at $169,000 and will be completed in-house. Funds are available in the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund for this project, and I have a motion here, but I would pause here to answer any questions you may have.
Councillors or trustees, pardon me?
Sounds good.
What's your recommendation, Lauren?
Excellent. Motion to approve the City Hall Transfer Switch Project, authorizing expenditures up to $169,000, and approve the budget amendment appropriating expenditures from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund.
Thank you, sir. Trustees?
Motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendation. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that motion is approved. Thank you, Lauren. Item 5B is approve release of previously allocated grant match funds in the amount of $200,000 and approve a budget revision appropriating $60,000 to the Waste Management Operational Fund for the purchase of a residential Polycarts and transfer to the Waste Management Contingency Fund. That was a long one. Hi, Chris. Did his mic go off?
Nope.
Nope.
One of those substation problems?
I think a limb fell on it.
Ice storm.
We have a spare.
We saved that for the very end, just for you, Chris.
And it wasn't off all night?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you are.
Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. It's been a while, but if you can recall, in February of 2020, the trustees approved a partnership with Oklahoma State University New Project Development Center for a downdraft gasifier prototype. The project was dependent on receiving funding from OCAST with a $200,000 in-kind city match. I was notified in August that they did not get the funding for that project, so we still have the $200,000. The Waste Management Department is in need of buying some more residential Polycarts. We've utilized all the funding that we currently had, and we're needing to buy some more. So I'd like to use $60,000 of that $200,000 and appropriate it to the Waste Management Operational Account to purchase those residential Polycarts and then move the remaining $140,000 to Waste Management Contingency Fund.
Thank you, Chris. It's disappointing to hear that that project didn't get funded. That was a cool idea that we'd hope to see. Maybe they'll come back with a different one sometime soon.
They're still going to be working on it, so maybe in the future.
Good. Trustees, any other questions?
Motion to release the gasifier, oh, Chris, did you want to make a recommendation?
Recommendation is to release the gasifier match funds in an amount of $200,000 and approve the budget revision appropriating $60,000 to the Waste Management Operational Fund.
Motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
Just to be clear, the staff recommendation also includes $140,000 going to the contingency fund.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thanks. All right, so we have a motion and a second on that recommendation. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that item is approved. Thanks, Chris. That takes us to item 6, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. McNichol?
No reports, sir.
Trustees? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. At this point, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting at item 14 on the agenda, I'm sorry, at item 13 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, the Stillwater City Council will now enter executive session for the purposes listed on the agenda.